Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, March 3rd, 2025. Mr. C. Madgerich called the roll, please.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Groff.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end, and city manager Pat Tregeon, who's on my left at the other end. We have staff and other folks who will be participating in the meeting as the meeting goes along, and we'll make those introductions at the appropriate times. We would ask folks here in the chambers, if you have a cellphone, to be sure and silence it, or otherwise assure that it won't disrupt our meeting. We do have a copy of the meeting materials in the back for members of the public who may be interested to follow along, or need to check on some of the information that is available to the city council. We also have extra copies of the agenda, which are available to anybody that might need them as they're attending the meeting this evening. With that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on our agenda this evening is approval of tonight's agenda. I'll check with staff as I was know first, to see if there are any changes that need to be made. Mr. Tregeon?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And are there any items that council members might like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration, or other changes that council members might wish to make to the agenda this evening? It does not seem to be the case. It does not appear that we have anybody from the public who may be here for an item in the consent agenda, so I think we can chance going ahead with the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
It's been moved by councilmember Bauer, seconded by councilmember Groff, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on the agenda is general public comment. This will be an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on this evening's agenda, but are either related to city business, or of interest to people in the community. We do provide an opportunity for public comment as agenda items come up, but we also do want to make sure at the start of each meeting, we provide an opportunity also for general public comment. Does not appear that we have anyone here this evening for general comment, so we'll proceed then with the agenda. And we have next our business items, and we'll jump right into those. And our first business item this evening is to hear a report and presentation from John Connolly, who's the representative, he's like the king of the Twin Cities North Chamber, or whatever the exact title is. I always have trouble with titles, so why don't you go with king for now?
I think I'll just refer myself as just a guy, a jack. So, but anyway, I just wanted to pull this up here real quick, and just thank you, Mayor Rowe, members of the council, staff, for allowing me the opportunity to share a short update about what we're doing, where we're going, and what is our plan for the future with Twin Cities North Chamber. I think the first thing I always like to start out with is our vision, and that is to promote business, develop leaders, and connect communities. And thanks for allowing me to connect with you all tonight. Let's see, I think that I'm gonna just do that. Right now, a quick overview of us as our governance structure. We have nine-member board directors that oversee the staff, which is myself, and we do have a couple of reps from the Roseville area, someone who works for Ayers Associates, and someone who works for Nine North, so a couple reps on that board. We are in good standing with the Department of Revenue, and with Secretary of State's office. Our filings are up to speed, and I just want to assure you of that, because it's always a good thing to, you know, share with everyone that you are in good standing with that, and you have, you know, regular financial statements, monthly audits with CPA firms, as well as annual review and tax returns. We have a committee structure that involves our ambassadors. They're the ones who do all the fun things, ribbon cuttings, and welcoming businesses, task force. We have selectively put task force together, such things as like when we have a particular issue with the road construction that was on 35W, and pending construction that's going to be on 36, and with Fairview and things like that, we put task force together. And then we do some selective marketing things, too, as well. We always try to, like I said, promote business, find new ways to promote them, whether it's through digital, or whether it's through PR, et cetera. So, and then we do some public policy things, more on a local level, and that is with the cities and counties that we find more, you know, being that voice for businesses, and small businesses within the smaller communities, rather than the state of Minnesota. So, summary of what we did the last year or so, membership. We've been on a slow climb trajectory, which is, you know, sustainable growth, which is great to see. We did have higher renewals, which was great to see in the last year or so. We did have growth in engagement. Coming out COVID, you know, that was always an uphill climb for every, every organization that gathered, you know, beforehand. And so, that was always, but now we're starting to build that back, and so that, you know, we have a positive trend line showing more engagement with not only our business councils and other events, but with our legacy events, too, as well. Our administration fiscal management systems are in place. I just want to mention, our offices are out of the reserve here, off of Highway 36 in Roseville. It's a shared office space, so we do office here in Roseville. And then on the public policy side, we did engage with the team here, with City of Roseville, with Green to Go Initiative, you know, promoting that, as well as the energy efficiency initiative, too. And we always get involved, whether it's, you know, in those particular instances with just one city, but when we see an opportunity to broaden that out. So, we think what happens in Roseville here could very well be a great model for other cities in our footprint, such as Arden Hill, Shoreview, et cetera, because we think, you know, this one in Roseville seems to have much more buy-in from the business community, and much more adaptability with the runway a little bit longer, and forgiving. So, I think with those things in mind, I think we can use that template then to, you know, spider that out to our neighboring cities in Ramsey County, as well as some in Oka County, so. And then, we also, you know, offer opportunity for public policy, you know, people such as mayors, and county reps, and legislators to gather with our members, too, as well, on a quarterly basis. Some new initiatives. I always like to cover new initiatives, because that's what, you know, we always strive and aspire to do, more new initiatives. We do have a manufacturing cohort. It's a small group, and we did receive a small grant from Deed, called Drive for Five, and it is a, what they call, part two grant. So, we're using that, those funds, it's a small amount of funds, used to promote opportunities in manufacturing in our footprint, and we are producing videos that will then be shared on our website, and on YouTube, as well as with our leveraged partners, Ramsey, Anoka County, our cities, as well as other stakeholders like Northwestern, Bethel, other school districts, Roseville, Mounds View, et cetera. So, we're looking forward to launching those, probably in two weeks, those will be done, and professionally done. And we think that, you know, one of those things that Deed wanted to do is try to drive more workforce initiatives through the state of Minnesota, and they targeted some areas, and we were able to capture some of these resources and dollars. And then the goal, again, is to promote manufacturing career opportunities through, you know, people aged 18 to 30. So, we think there's, it's a fast path to a middle-class lifestyle for a lot of our, you know, adults. And we think that there is unique opportunities for them, not just in trades, but also in, like I said, the manufacturing area, whether it's food processing, med tech, et cetera. So, we're gonna, we're gonna showcase those. I mentioned Green to Go, and using it for other cities. We do have a slight collaboration with other chambers of commerce for young professionals. We always like to, you know, again, that fulfills our vision of developing leaders. And we also have broadened out our social media footprint. That's been a pretty good trajectory on impressions on LinkedIn, and Facebook, primarily. We do use X a little bit. I leave Instagram to Visit Roseville a lot, because it's so picturesque, and they do such a great job. We're gonna probably go more into YouTube, because of the videos I had mentioned earlier, and we're gonna start doing more of that, too, as well, on YouTube. And we did some special occasions in fourth quarter for promoting those things. And we're always looking for expanded partnerships with workforce and marketing, whether, again, it be with Ramsey County, with their Workforce Initiative Board, Innovative Board, or whether it's with a smaller organization where we can leverage resources. We're always looking for partnerships. Opportunities, brand openings, ribbon cuttings, that's what we're most well-known for, and those new initiatives. We always like to continue to support important items that are related to business in the community. You know, just steady stream of communication is always helpful, helping businesses adapt, whether it's offering specific resources, whether it's through the Minnesota Chamber affinity programs, or whether it's news that they should be aware of, compliance issues. There's all these news whenever the state of Minnesota does pass things, that they need to be aware of, and we like to be a resource for that, and we always share those in our newsletters, and in our business communications. One thing I will mention, we added a frequency newsletter. We're doing that twice a month, and it's been very received. Actually, you'd think that because when we're sending it out more, we'd get less clicks and less, you know, engagement, but it's actually gone up, which is great to see. The inverse happened, what we thought might happen. So, you never assume anything, I guess, so. What we do, why we do it, certificates of origin are great for exporters. We do a lot of those for Abbott, a local employer, who does a lot of exporting to various countries that require those certificates of origin, that are sealed and stamped, and signed by a local chamber of commerce. So, we do that for them, as well as some other businesses locally. I mentioned advocacy. We always invite business to grow, and we do that through our business councils, which now meet quarterly here in this city council chamber. Last month, or the previous month, we had Ramsey County with their workforce initiatives and their job. Now, coming up in April is gonna be a very important presentation by our state demographer, so I'm looking forward to hearing what she has to say about the trends and demographics, not just for this Twin City area, but specifically what's going on in our footprint here in Roseville. What are those trends? What is it showing, and where are we going, as far as a population? Should be interesting, and that's coming up in April, I believe, on the 23rd. And finally, we do like to participate in the community. We do goodwill things, you know, we do PR promotion. We always promote Rosefest, State Rosefest, and other events that are related to that. We also like to participate in things, such as, you know, an initiative that started, that started about a year or so ago by a very passionate private citizen, that felt that a private, you know, a newspaper, local newspaper, should be here, because Lilly discontinued. And so, there's an initiative to do that, and I serve in a small capacity related to that. And I know councilmember Groff's on that group, too, as well. And it's just more or less trying to, you know, keep the public informed about what's going on here in Roseville, on a local, you know, because with no local newspaper, there was a feeling that, hey, we should, we should be sharing, you know, a little more news. And so, I'm a small part of that, like I said, so. We do, every other Friday, a Facebook Live, and that's called Chamber Check-In, and I feature two or three guests, have a great dialogue with them. That's produced by Nine North here locally, so a shout-out to them for producing, you know, Chamber Check-In. They've, they've kept it going ever since COVID, when we couldn't gather. They started that up in May of 2020, and, boy, we're going on almost five years, huh, on our Facebook Live, and with their help, they produce it professionally. And it's always surprising the views you get on that. But we use it as a platform and an opportunity to promote newer businesses that come online. Think about a year ago, Par 365 Golf, and other new restaurants that really are new once, and they need that PR assistance. We try to get that word out to folks, so. And then, you know, the city of Roseville, we look at you as a partner in promoting Roseville, along with Visit Roseville, and we got a great partnership with their team. But then also, thank you for, you know, being a part of Business Council, and, you know, with St. Paul. And that is about all I wanted to say, and I thank you for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any final questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, the information, and the work you're doing on behalf of our business community. We appreciate that, the work of the chamber. Questions or feedback from councilmembers? Councilmember Strawn?
I just wanted to, I, obviously, I've seen you at many events over the last few years, but I just wanted to especially acknowledge the amount of people who came to a grand opening that was over on Larpenter, Lexington and Larpenter, and there were so many other young business professionals as well. And so, it wasn't just about that one professional, but it was about a whole team of people that were there to support them. And then I said, oh, has anyone talked to the business next door that was new? And so, they were so excited, they all, like, five of them went next door and tried to convince them to join, too. And so, I think that, that type of energy with, you know, all these young business owners under 35 or 40 years old, is just really contagious, and I, that's a really exciting thing. We love our businesses, and we appreciate what they are, but when it's some new, exciting energy, it really, it bleeds into everything else, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Great. Other questions? Councilmember Schorn?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and I was very pleased to hear about the manufacturing piece, you know, and I think when people hear manufacturing, they don't realize how diverse that is. And it's, and I think it's good for both the business, businesses, as well as people looking for employment. And they, some of those opportunities are really good opportunities, so to be able to promote that, and get those two sides connected, I think is really great. So, thank you for doing that.
Well, and, and it crosses all the, you have, you have a couple of great food processors. You can probably smell some when you're driving by I-35, right, with Beembo and Old Dutch there. But there's, it crosses a whole cross-section. You have, you know, small machine shop, you have other manufacturers that produce even small little items here in Roseville. It's just, I'm always blown away at, you know, the innovation and the creativity that some of our local entrepreneurs have.
And the job opportunities.
And, and that's it. It's the career opportunities available to them, you know, apprenticeship programs, you know, you know, you know, seasonal to full-time. All of those things are available, and, and alls you need is credentials and skills, and a hard work ethic.
Thank you.
Councilmember Groff?
I will piggyback on that, and I'm glad to hear you working with the schools, because I know they have several programs where they've been focusing on that.
Right.
Roseville High School, and the other schools in the, in the area. And everyone doesn't want to go to a four-year college, or whatever, so we need to have opportunities for everybody to reach a good living.
Yeah. I was talking to XL Energy, and they said that they have a lineman program, that it's amazing how fast the path is to get to a journeyman, in what, a matter of five, six years? It's just, and the growth opportunities, and the compensation, the whole package, pretty impressive, so.
Thanks. Other questions or feedback? I did want to note that, or just check with, do you have the ability to put the Chamber check-ins on your YouTube channel as well, or is that proprietary to Nine North or Facebook?
Well, you know, it's interesting, I've had that conversation, because, you know, they produce it, and they host it on their website, and I link to it, but it's, it's absolutely something of a conversation piece that we, we probably should consider. We, we've got a lot in the archive, and if we release that, it would be kind of fun to see what the views would be for all of these businesses, and what the lift might be throughout. So, yeah. And actually, the manufacturing cohort videos that I talked about earlier, we're gonna actually host those on our website, and then they'll be on YouTube. So, actually, that might be a good test for how many views come through, because we, you know, part of the grant is measuring those views.
Sure.
For Deed, through that. And so, what's the conversion rate on that? So, that's actually might be a pretty good test.
For sure. Okay. Pat, you have a?
Yes, I think, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank John and Twin Cities North for really being a really important partner for Roseville Business Councils. We do a lot of the heavy lifting in between meetings, help us secure speakers and promote it, so I want to thank you. Wouldn't be as successful it is without, without your help and Twin Cities North Chambers' support. Also, I want to thank you for the partnership on the Green to Go. You really were able to help open some doors for businesses to us, to make the connection, and it really helped that you were by our side as we talked to businesses.
Yeah.
So, thank you for, for being directly involved in that.
Yeah. Well, that one made a lot of sense to be engaged in, absolutely. And, and businesses, it's not they didn't want to, they just need to have that pipeline of material and product, and now with this runway, and with the plan, I think they're gonna be able to accommodate that and adapt to what everyone wants, and that is less items in the waste stream. So, yeah. One other thing I wanted to mention, I am a board member on the Friends of the Oval, too, as well. So, so I, I've only been on there a year, so I can't, I can't, but, but, you know, I enjoy being on the ice side of promoting the Oval.
Good. All right. Well, thank you again for all that work, and for the presentation this evening, and for answering our questions or feedback that we provided, and we look forward to the next opportunity to engage.
Thank you for the opportunity. We'll see you in April.
Very good.
Thank you.
Take care. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a number of business items related to our new hotel licensing program. And the first license to consider this evening is for Courtyard by Marriott. I'll turn it over to city manager Tregeon to introduce this, as well as the other subsequent items.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. We're here tonight to consider granting the license of seven hotels. There are separate cases and separate resolutions, but before I get into that, just want to mention a few things. As many of the council know, this has been a long slog to get here. We had to have legislation introduced, considered, voted on, approved. Then we then, after that, did create an ordinance about hotel licensing, a lot of thanks to city attorney Tierney, and really helping us draft that. We had a really great engagement process, too, with the hotel operators. They provide really valuable feedback on what works and doesn't work. And I have to say, pretty much across the board, there is a lot of support from the hotel operators. They understand why we're doing it. They don't feel this is overly onerous, and they have thanked us for catching some things that maybe just weren't being done at their hotels. So, it's been a real productive partnership, so we really appreciate all that support. You also will recall, in December, we did have an amendment to the ordinance. Originally, we intended to have this run on a calendar year basis. We found, by going through the inspections in this fall, that there was a lot of work to be done, and we just weren't able to turn that around in sufficient time. So, we did extend the period before licensing officially starts to April 1st of each year, and run from April 1st to March 31st. So, we are now at the point where we're ready to grant some licenses. Seven of the 12 licenses will be up tonight. Remaining five will be taken care of during the March meetings here, so will be coming down the road here. But for the first seven, I'm really pleased to state that they have complied with everything that we asked them to, all the code and everything else. So, I will go through them individually. As I said, each is a separate case, and they need a resolution to be passed as well. So, with that introduction, first off, we have the Courtyard Marriott Hotel at 2905 Center Point Road. They do have 120 rooms. They have applied for a hotel license, and submitted all the necessary information for granting the hotel licenses, and all interested persons, as defined in the code, have passed their background checks. They've also been inspected by the Community Development Department and Fire Department, have completed all necessary corrections, and do not have any outstanding building or fire code violations. They also do not have any outstanding utility bills, taxes, or other charges with the city. Then finally, just for some information, the Courtyard by Marriott has had 37 reactive police calls since January 1st, 2024, and no overdose deaths in the hotel, and the Police Department has reviewed the calls for service, and do not have any concerns about granting the license. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of the resolution granting Courtyard Marriott Hotel license to operate from April 1st to March 31st, April 1st, 2025, to March 31st, 2026. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tregeon. Are there questions from the council for staff on this hotel license application? All right. Oh, Councilmember Strawn?
If there were to be concerns that came up during the year, would that potentially be a reason to withdraw? Not saying this specifically, but if any of these particular licensees were to have a situation that caused concern?
Councilmember Strawn certainly is. Throughout the year, once they have a license, they're always subject to our ordinance, and need to adhere to that. If we found violations throughout the year, we would consider that, and potentially bring that forward for consideration and revocation of that particular license. But we would have to do a lot of work on our end to make sure what's verified and what's not, and making sure that it warrants revocation. I think typically, we would give some opportunity for them to correct what that, whatever that violation might be, and then if they did not, we'd bring something forward for your consideration. But certainly, that's something we would be able to do throughout the year.
Right. And then I was just wondering, do we anticipate doing this much due diligence next year for subsequent year licensing?
Yes, we intend to inspect every room once a year. It's September, October timeframe. And I would mention, too, that prior to the inspections, we did give all the hotels kind of the inspection checklist. Here's what we're gonna be looking at. And so, we would anticipate, and then the large majority of the hotels, since they've made the corrections this year, won't have as many violations, maybe none, or they would be able to correct them pretty quickly, if they are. So, we'd probably have full transparency, but yes, we would go back every year and do a thorough inspection.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Normally, we provide an opportunity for the, any representatives of the applicants to present on behalf of their application. However, I'm fairly confident that we don't have any representatives from the hotels here this evening. Just note that that opportunity is available. I also would usually offer an opportunity for public comment at this point on each of the license applications. We also do not appear to have anyone from the public who would wish to comment, and so we will then proceed. We have the recommendation to adopt the resolution granting the license to Courtyard by Marriott. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Bauer. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Schroeder is the maker of the motion.
And just, all I wanted to comment on, I wanted to thank city manager and the staff for all the hard work they did, getting this, not only, you know, worked on getting it passed, but also getting it in place. It's one thing to have it changed, but then to also have all our ducks in a row to be able to go through this. So, I just wanted to say I have some appreciation for all the work that they did for this.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Bauer is the second, or?
I would echo what councilmember Schroeder stated. Also, following up on her comments, the implementation of doing this, there are a number of hotel rooms. I was not aware of how many there are in Roseville, and to actually go to each individual one and to inspect them, quite the undertaking, impressive, and real service to residents and to the visitors of Roseville.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? And I would just note that probably we are going to be setting the example for other communities. I don't think, there may have been a couple of communities that have maybe special legislation, or attempted special legislation over the years, but I don't know of anybody else that's done the enactment of this licensing program, and been as thorough about it as we have. And so, certainly, we can be an, an example for other cities to, to follow, and we'll accordingly charge the consulting fee, right?
If only.
That's one thing in government. We're happy to be copied. All right. With that, then we've got the motion before us to adopt that resolution approving the license for the Courtyard by Marriott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That license is approved. Next, then, would be consideration of the license application for Fairfield Inn and Suites on Center Point Drive, also. Mr. Tregeon on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is for the hotel license for Fairfield Inn and Suites at 345 Center Point Drive. They have 79 rooms. They have submitted a hotel license and all the necessary information to be considered granting of a hotel license, and all interested persons have been passed the background check. The Fairfield Inn and Suites have been inspected by the city's Community Development Department and Fire Department, have completed all necessary corrections, and do not have any outstanding building or fire code issues. They also do not have any outstanding utility bills, taxes, or other charges. Fairfield Suites, Inn and Suites have had 17 reactive police calls since January 2024, and no overdose deaths at the hotel. And the Police Department has reviewed the calls for service, and do not have any concerns about granting the hotel license, and therefore, we do recommend approval of the hotel license for Fairfield and Suites at 345 Center Point Drive.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tregeon. Questions from the council on this application? All right. We have the recommended motion to, excuse me, the recommended resolution to approve the license. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on that motion. Councilmember Bauer is the maker?
No comment.
All right. Councilmember Strawn is the second, or? Other comment on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution approving the license for Fairfield Inn and Suites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next is item 7D, consider approval of the license. Opposed. That passes unanimously. Next is item 7D. Consider approval of the hotel license for the Hampton Inn on Iona Lane. Once again, Mr. Trudgen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, we are looking to approve the hotel license for Hampton Inn at 2050 Iona Lane. They have 100 hotel rooms. They have submitted a hotel license application and all necessary information and can be considered for granting the hotel license. All interested persons associated with the hotel have passed their background checks. The city's Community Development and Fire Departments have completed all the necessary inspections, and the hotel has completed all necessary corrections and do not have any outstanding building or fire code issues. Hampton Inn does not have any outstanding utility bills, taxes, or other charges. The Hampton Inn has had 22 reactive police calls since January 1st, 2024, and no overdose deaths at the hotel. Police Department has reviewed the calls for service and do not have any concerns about granting the hotel license. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the hotel license for the Hampton Inn at 2050 Iona Lane.
All right. We've got the motion to adopt the resolution approving the license as recommended. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay. Let's go. Moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Schroder. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Graff.
Since it's the first one I've gotten in on, I would just say that, yes, it is a lot of work, and I have been involved with it somewhat through the visit Roseville because we worked with the hotels there. So it's been a process, but I think we really handled it well communicating. You know, this is something that could be contentious, and it wasn't. It was working hand in hand. So I think it was a real community builder, and we're going in the same direction. So I liked how it was handled, and I want to also thank Mr. Trudgen for telling us the number of rooms, because I was curious how many rooms were in here, because it varies so much in the police calls. But as you look at it, it kind of follows the number of rooms. So the percentage is probably fairly similar. Thanks.
All right. Other discussion on the motion?
I would just echo the same thing that Councilmember Graff said, so.
Right. Now, if there's no further discussion, we've got the motion before us to adopt the resolution approving the license for the Hampton Inn on Iona Lane. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That license is approved. Next, we have item 7E, which is to consider approval of the hotel license for the Holiday Inn Express on Long Lake Road. Mr. Trudgen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is for granting the hotel license for the Holiday Inn Express at 2715 Long Lake Road. They have 119 rooms. They have applied for a hotel license and submitted all the necessary information needed for the granting of the hotel license, and all interested persons associated with the hotel have passed background checks. The city's Community Development and Fire Department has conducted inspections in every room in the hotel, and the hotel has completed all necessary corrections and do not have any outstanding building or fire code issues. The Holiday Inn Express does not have any outstanding utility bills, taxes, or other charges with the city. And finally, the Holiday Inn Express has had 39 reactive police calls since January 1st, 2024, and no overdose deaths at their hotel. Therefore, the Police Department, or the Police Department has reviewed the calls for service and do not have any concerns. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the hotel license for the Holiday Inn Express at 2715 Long Lake Road.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strong. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Schroder to adopt the resolution approving the license for Holiday Inn Express on Long Lake Road as requested. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That resolution is adopted, and that license is approved. That brings us then to item 7F, which is to consider approval of a hotel license for Home2 Suites on Iona Lane. Mr. Trudgen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is the hotel license for Home2 Suites at 2020 Iona Lane. They have applied for a hotel license and have submitted all the necessary information to be considered for granting of a license. All interested persons associated with the hotel have passed background checks. The city's Community Development Department and Fire Department have conducted inspections of all hotel rooms. Hotel has completed all necessary corrections and do not have any outstanding building or fire code issues. Home2 Suites does not have any outstanding utility bills, taxes, or other charges with the city. Home2 Suites has had 37 reactive police calls since January 1st, 2024, and no overdose deaths at the hotel. The Police Department does, has reviewed the calls and does not have any concerns with granting the hotel license. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the hotel license for Home2 Suites at 2020 Iona Lane.
All right. Is there a motion on that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I think we'll give a motion to Councilmember Bauer, second, I think, to Councilmember Graff. I thought I heard you second.
We need a flag.
With that, we have the, we have the motion before us to adopt the resolution approving the Home2 Suites hotel license. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That resolution is adopted, and license is approved. That then brings us to item 7G, which is to consider approval of a hotel license for Residence Inn at, on Center Point Drive. I'll turn it over once again to Mr. Trudgen for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is for the hotel license for the Residence Inn at 2895 Center Point Road. They have 108 rooms. Residence Inn has applied for the hotel license and submitted all the necessary information to be considered for granting the hotel license, and all interested persons with the hotel have passed background checks. They have been inspected by the city's Community Development and Fire Department, and the hotel has completed all necessary corrections and do not have any outstanding building or fire code issues. Residence Inn does not have any outstanding utility bills, taxes, or other charges with the city. Since January 1st, 2024, the Residence Inn has had 70 reactive police calls and zero overdose deaths at the hotel. The Police Department has reviewed the calls for service and do not have any concerns about granting the hotel license for the Residence Inn. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the hotel license for the Residence Inn at 2895 Center Point Drive.
Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, seconded by Councilmember Strong to adopt the resolution approving the license for the Residence Inn on Center Point Drive. Any discussion on that motion?
I had a question.
Councilmember Strong.
I just had a question. You had mentioned the lack of overdose deaths on the other properties. Does that mean there was one or more at this particular property, since it wasn't mentioned?
Oh, there are zero.
Zero.
As you said in the report.
Oh, zero.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Looking at more than one space.
Yeah. All the hotels tonight not having any.
Thank you. Thank you. I was looking at the police memorandum. Thank you.
No problem. We have the motion before us. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That resolution is adopted, and license is approved. And finally, last but not least, consideration of the hotel license for the Country Inn and Suites on Snelling. Once again, Mr. Trudgen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is for the hotel license for the Country Inn and Suites at 2740 Snelling Avenue. They have 91 hotel rooms. Country Inn and Suites have applied for hotel license and submitted all the necessary information to be considered for a license. All interested persons with the hotel have passed background checks. Country Inn and Suites have been inspected by the city's Community Development and Fire Department, and the hotel has completed all necessary corrections and do not have any outstanding building or fire code issues. Country Inn and Suites do not have any outstanding utility bills, taxes, or other charges with the city. And then finally, the Country Inn and Suites have had 30 reactive police calls since January 1st, 2024, and no overdose deaths during that period. The Police Department has reviewed the calls for service and do not have concerns about the granting of the hotel license. Therefore, staff does recommend granting approval of the Country Inn and Suites hotel license at 2740 Snelling Avenue.
All right. Is there a motion on that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Bauer to adopt the resolution approving the license for Country Inn and Suites on Snelling. Discussion on that motion?
I just want to say one thing I didn't get in on the last. I think that it's so important that this is being done, because it brings all of our rooms up to a standard that's consistent. And I think it was mentioned that, you know, for guests here, it's a really good program. So I'm very interested, as you said, Mayor, to see who else follows this pattern, because I think it's really good for the city.
For sure.
I know that this is, I'm sure Julie Warren is a little disappointed this didn't happen under her watch. This is something that she was really excited about, just because, but she certainly can part, her legacy is. But I know that it just helps them feel really good about what they're sending off to the public and saying this is who Roseville is. I was at a rest shop in northern Minnesota, and front and center was the Roseville booklet last weekend. And I said I was from Roseville, and she was like, oh, you have a great booklet. So, I mean, they really have, this really helps them stand behind the product that they're sharing with others.
So I just have to ask, in northern Minnesota, was it a 2024 booklet, or was it a 2018 booklet?
It looks pretty new.
Okay.
I'm not going to lie. She made me take it, but I didn't open it. Pretty sure I knew it was in it.
All right. We do have the motion before us to adopt the resolution approving the license for Country Inn and Suites on Snelling Avenue. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That resolution is adopted, and that license is therefore approved. We got through those in record time. That brings us to a different type of business item this evening, and that is to receive the 2024 Cash Reserve Fund report and to consider potential transfers. We have our Finance Director, Michelle Petrick, with us this evening to bring this item, this annual item before us this evening for our consideration. Ms. Petrick?
Good evening. We do this every year based on the city's policy, which a copy is in the packet. The excess cash reserve fund was created back in 2018. We examine four funds. The General Fund, Parks and Recreation Funds, Communications, and License Center Fund. We used to also include the IT Fund, but that's been closed into the General Fund. These are preliminary unaudited figures. We're still closing the books, but we believe we have all the material adjustments entered. And at this point, the Parks and Recreation Fund exceeds its high reserve level of 30% by $424,000. Right now, it's standing at 37% of the budget. The Communications Fund is currently at 8%. It's below its minimum reserve level, which is 10%. And that fund is currently short $10,308. And the License Center is currently standing at 22%. The high target reserve in that fund is 15%. So currently, the fund reserve is 153,000 over the high level. Historically, we would sweep those amounts that are over the high level into the excess cash reserve fund, and those funds that are below the minimum would sweep out of the cash reserve fund. I'm recommending that the License Center Fund retain the 153,000 to pay for costs associated with a new facility or a remodeled facility. I'm currently recommending that Parks and Rec, that amount be swept into this fund. When we do the 26 Capital Improvement Plan, we will probably be bringing forward a recommendation to sweep funds out and into that Vehicle and Equipment Fund, at least that one, if not other vehicle and equipment funds. I would recommend that the Communications Fund be brought up to its minimum reserve level. In the case of the General Fund, it is currently sitting below its minimum, which is 35%. We're currently estimating 31%. When we present the audit report, the excess cash reserve fund gets merged into the General Fund. And based on my estimates, that'll bring the combined General Fund up to 37%. So at this point, I'm not recommending that we bring the General Fund up to its minimum, simply because we don't have the mark-to-market adjustment done yet for the year, which will increase revenues significantly in the General Fund. And because we do present a combined General Fund, I don't believe it's necessary at this point to actually make the General Fund hold to its minimum. And that's all I have at this point.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Petrick. Are there questions for Ms. Petrick on the information presented and the recommendations this evening? Councilmember Schroder.
Yes, thank you for bringing this forward. I was hoping you could walk us through the amount in the License Center that you're recommending holding in that fund. Would this be something that would go into eventually the CIP, or would this be in a operations expense when it comes to this new building? I guess what I'm trying to get clear on is where would the expense to this revenue offset? Would it be in operations?
The License Center covers operations and capital.
So, but this would, but it would, it would not be, are we considering this a capital or an operations expense?
Um.
I assume capital, because it would go into the building as.
Well, at this point, it would retain, it would be retained in the License Center Fund, which will be paying for some of the preliminary capital costs. So the architectural study, some of that preliminary stuff that we cannot pay for with a sales tax.
Right.
And we haven't determined a solution for the License Center building. And so until the point in time that we make the decision if we're renovating an existing building or building a new building, at that point in time, we would create a building fund. It would go into the facilities fund.
Right. That's what I'm asking.
But at this point, we don't have a facilities fund. The License Center pays for both operations and capital.
And so when you, when we get a bill for the architect, that would be run through this department?
It will be coded to this fund.
And then, and then I would assume if there's not enough revenue in there, then that would come out of the General Fund?
Well, at this point, this fund has been swept for
Right, right.
a number of years.
Absolutely. That's why I thought, yes.
So I do believe there will be sufficient revenues. I'm also hopeful that an architect in any preliminary, other preliminary costs won't be extensive.
You were warned about this earlier.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay.
Yikes.
I don't like flashing lights.
Yeah.
And if at the end of the year, I mean, if there's any amount remaining of the 153, we'll be back next year having the same discussion.
Right. Because we don't know what the cost is yet.
Correct.
Mr. Trudgen?
And just to add, thank you for the question. I think for the time being, we wanted to just park the money there, because we don't know where it's going to be. Obviously, it would go towards some of the expenses to help figure it out. And then to the extent of whatever we end up doing, we would, you know, utilize some of that for the capital needs. If we determine a totally different model, let's say, and don't even stay on campus and end up leasing somewhere, which we haven't really
Right.
gone down that road, we would need to pay for rent, right? So, you know, this fund would be utilized for that. But typically, with the exception of the COVID years, the License Center generates enough dollars to pay for all the operating expenses. You have $200,000 to the General Fund for tax relief, and then still have this balance here. So, and over the years, we've built that fund up in anticipation, and then we've drawn it back down. So we've gone back and forth. So we just thought it'd be prudent just to park it in there instead of sweeping it over there and sweeping it back when we need it. But that policy decision is yours.
Sure. No, it was more on just kind of following through what that flow would look like and how that worked is more what the clarification was.
Right. And I think as we were to make some decisions, this can become clear, and we'll talk very intentionally about that. Okay, now, now we're at this stage, we'll pay for it by using the License Center funds, or we could use it as an option for you to consider. So we'll keep talking about it.
Okay.
And I think Ms. Petrick also noted that the License Center Fund itself funds both operating and capital out of the same fund, so there isn't really segregation in that regard. So that's, that's been historically the case. So I think when we did the leasehold improvements a number of years ago, when we bought the building or expanded the site, that was out of that fund
Yes.
on the capital basis. So it's, we're following that trend.
And then part of it was, because then we have a CIP, a list of what our capital items are versus, that's why I was wondering, will this become a CIP? that's why I was wondering, will this become a CIP list of things versus is it just an operation expense?
It wouldn't be an operating expense, but it would, it may or may not be a capital improvement program item, because those tend to be of a certain type. And like, building buildings don't generally get listed on there, so it would depend on what we do ultimately, I would say. All right. Other questions for staff on the recommendations in the presentation this evening? Otherwise, a motion to lost my screen. A motion to accept the recommendation and sweep the funds from the Park and Rec Fund into the Cash Reserve Fund, as well as sweeping some funds from Cash Reserve into the Communications Fund to get it above its minimum would be the recommended action. Is there a motion from the council regarding that request?
I'll move it.
Second?
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Schroder to take those actions as outlined in the request for council action. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Graff.
Thank you, Ms. Petrick, for the information. It was very clear, and I read through it twice and felt comfortable with it all, so it made sense to me, and I think that this is a good plan going forward.
Right, as the second of Councilmember Schroder?
And I do, I really appreciate us doing this every year, because it really gives us a a summary of what's happening, so I do appreciate that coming through every year, so thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? All right. With that, we've got the motion before us to follow those recommendations with respect to those funds. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? That passes unanimously, that item is approved. Pardon me. And with that, I believe Ms. Petrick, you're here for the next item as well, the budget calendar?
Yep. So every year we establish a budget calendar. This one pretty much follows past actions. And the only point of discussion is that we historically have a budget hearing, used to be called the Truth in Taxation Hearing, at one meeting, and then at the next meeting, we would adopt the final tax levies and budget. We cannot hold that Truth in Taxation Hearing it has to be after November 24th. And your last November meeting is on November 24th. So, we would either have to have a council meeting on the 25th, or two meetings in December, or you could hold the budget hearing and the final levy and budget adoption on the same night. Several cities do that as well. So that's why they're the last two items say either December 1st or December 8th.
And just for clarity purposes, we currently do not have a council meeting scheduled for December 8th?
We do not. The only meeting we have, we have one meeting in December, December 1st.
So we would have to set a meeting on the 8th if we were to do that? Okay. Thoughts from the council or questions from the council on the proposed schedule?
What's the logic behind having unseparate meetings? What's the plus or the minus?
I think the, probably the possibility of wanting to weigh in what we heard from the public and consider what that might mean in terms of action on the budget and the levy is why that timing is often used by councils. And I think has been used by Roseville in the past as well, just because of the, this year's calendar. The 24th is not, does not work for that hearing. So, but certainly, as was noted, other cities do both actions on the same evening, and I think actually even the city of Roseville historically, on occasion, may have done that in the past as well. So, that's, I know about it.
That was kind of what I thought.
Councilmember Bauer?
Wasn't there, I'm correct, I'm wrong, but I think the notices that were mailed out came pretty late this past year, correct? And there is some, we actually, some people did not actually receive their notices prior to us having the meeting, even though they were supposed to be delivered, and I'll note that we did everything correct, but they just, we kind of did not get them out in time. It might be something for us to consider when we're figuring out this calendar date.
Well, I think it may have been that they got them out in time according to what they have to do at the county. There may have been some issues between the county and getting it to the residents' mailboxes involving a federal agency or pseudo-federal agency.
Well, and just to add to that, that's why we do have the requirement that the Truth in Taxation cannot be held before November 25th, because technically, the counties have until the 24th to get the notice out.
And we did, I think this past year, our calendar, our schedule was like right up against that, that prescription. So we were kind of early in the schedule, and they were, and the process was later, or slower, or whatever.
And I would mention every year, it does change. Sometimes there's a fifth Monday, so we have that extra week in between, but the way the calendar falls this year is problematic, so.
Got it. Councilmember Strawn?
I was just gonna say, in looking at the calendar, I don't know that having it on changing to a Tuesday night on the 25th would be better. Being a holiday week and such, and then if it is as late as it was this last year, I don't know. I feel like we should consider going into the 1st, whether or not that's the same night. I don't know that information on my own, but I do think it would be better to wait for that the 1st, just because we had so many people who got it the same day. I think myself, I got it that day or the day after, so I know it is a really close call.
And, you know, potentially, we could, through the budget process this year, see how things are going and decide later in the year whether we need to set the meeting on the 8th. Or if we feel like the process is moving along pretty well, and we don't have as much likelihood of needing the extra week between. You know, I think we have, state law gives us a fairly short window to be able to call a meeting or to have a meeting to our calendar, so we don't have to do it today necessarily, or decide that today. Councilmember Schroder?
I would agree with Councilmember Strawn on keeping the the budget hearing on the 1st. I did get a lot of calls from residents upset that they got it after we had had our meeting, and so I think just to give that little more wiggle room for our residents, I think for sure, you know, instead of doing it on the Tuesday after, I think that first is definitely something we could do, and and I'm actually comfortable if we want to wait on determining that second one.
I would be fine with that, too. I think we'll know more. How soon would we need to decide on that?
I think you just need three-day notice.
Oh, is that?
Hopefully, we would know by the 1st. Just say.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And, and I agree with that, and just to be clear for people in the public, what we're talking about is the notices that go out from the county that tell you your estimated tax based on the preliminary levies that everybody passes in September. They then process those out and figure out preliminary tax rates and apply those rates to the preliminary values, and it's all preliminary, but at least it gives folks notice of the hearing and what the impact might be to them individually, and so I think it does, I agree that it makes sense to make sure that folks have had as much opportunity before our hearing to have received those notices from the county. So with that, I think we still would want to take an action to approve the budget calendar. And we can just, perhaps as part of the motion, note that we'll make a subsequent determination as to whether to do the meeting on the 8th.
Motion to approve the budget calendar with the DVD on the 8th.
Second. All right, that's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Graff to approve the calendar with the future determination on whether we do the meeting on the 8th. Any discussion on the motion? Right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our budget schedule. Thank you, Ms. Petrick. We'll let you get away from all the flashing lights here. And that brings us to consideration of appointments to various advisory commissions for the city. And I did want to provide a little bit of background. I don't know, Mr. Trudgeon, if you're planning to do any staff introductions?
No, I do have the tally sheet that I can display if you want.
Okay, why don't we, we can bring up the tally sheet. It probably makes sense to take the commissions just in order if, unless there is a commission that the council prefers to take first, but I was gonna note, I was, had a discussion with Mr. Trudgeon earlier today, and to the best we could recall, and believe me, we, you know, I don't think either of us would claim to be fully certified in this recollection, but in the past, the council may have had a precedent to give the longest potential term to the highest tally person. And then, you know, go from there. Now, that longest potential term would be any two-year partial term, because that would allow two years of service and a partial term, plus the potential for two additional three-year terms, full terms. Clearly, we all know that not everybody gets to the end of that without having to withdraw from a commission, or they move out of the city, or whatever, so that's, you know, we say that with a grain of salt, but that, at least as far as we could tell, may have been a precedent or can be a precedent to apply if the council chooses to do that. I also think it makes sense, certainly, to the extent that it appears from tallies that the appointments may be fairly clear, that we could make a single motion to appoint multiple individuals, just designating which one goes to which term, and proceed that way. And, you know, certainly, if there happens to be a commission where there's less consensus, especially maybe for subsequent appointments, we can take up what we feel there is consensus on as a single motion for multiple individuals, and then take subsequent motions to continue the process to fill the vacancies on that particular commission or commissions, if that makes sense to the council. So my suggestion is perhaps that we start at the top of the list, and we look at the Equity and Inclusion Commission. And I'll open it up for council discussion and/or potential motion.
Motion to approve Singaram, Stanley, and Taylor to the Equity and Inclusion Commission, with the longest serving the longest potential term assigned to Singaram.
I'll second that.
All right, and then, any preference on the other two?
Alphabetical order.
We have one of each.
Alphabetical order, I don't know.
So, okay, just to, so we can be clear on this, and I'm gonna have to go to my, back of my sheet, okay, EIC. So we have Singaram, Stanley, and Taylor. So Singaram would get the, the partial term ending in 2027. The next longest appointment would be the partial term ending in 26. And we're suggesting that that go in alphabetical order to then Mr. Stanley, is that correct? As the makers and seconders of the motion. And then, the third appointment, Mr. Taylor would be appointed to the full term ending in 2028. Okay? Maker and seconder are cool with that?
I'm in agreement.
All right. All right, discussion on that motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
I'm excited to see what these new people bring. It's a very eclectic bunch, and I think it'll be, I look forward to what they all work on together.
Great discussion, further discussion, Councilmember Graff as the seconder?
None of these were easy, because we had some really good applicants. I just want to stress that. But I do think that this group really adds some specific skills to the, to the group, to this commission. So that was why I supported them.
All right, other discussion on the motion? I will echo the thoughts as to the quality of the candidates we had, and I don't think the tallies are a reflection that people with fewer tallies are less capable. I think that we're we're all trying to make the best call we can as to how to, how to put a group together to serve the city and the community, the city government and the community in these roles. And we thank, and once again, appreciate everybody's interest in coming forward and being interested in serving. So with that, we have the motion before us for the three appointments to the Equity and Inclusion Commission as outlined in the motion. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? That passes unanimously. That then brings us to the Finance Commission, probably one of our tougher decisions of the evening, there's one vacancy. And seems to be some consensus in regards to that. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kanzemback to the Finance Commission for the full term.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Schroder to appoint Mr. Kanzemback to the full term. As outlined, discussion of the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Bauer?
I'll echo what the mayor just previously said in the last one. We had a lot of candidates, not just on this commission, but in all these commissions, and the choices were not easy, and again, the numbers do not reflect that appropriately.
Other discuss, or as the second of Councilmember Schroder?
I did want to echo that as well, and I, for all the commissions, that we had so many people coming out, appreciate all of them, and it was, it was hard, so again, you know, I think the mayor always says, you know, if you don't get appointed this time, you know, please talk to, you know, our coordinator, and then there's plenty of other opportunities, because again, we do appreciate the the talent pool.
All right, other discussion on the motion? Right, and I did want to note, in this particular instance, I did reach out to Mr. Abu Mayala and had a good conversation with him, and hopefully other councilmembers did as well. And my tally is reflective of, I really couldn't make a decision between the two very qualified candidates. So I do hope, in that case specifically, that, that Mr. Abu Mayala has, you know, finds a way to connect with, you know, volunteering for the city, or certainly applies in the future as well. And the main reason I made that comment was because I wanted to demonstrate that I worked so hard to be able to pronounce his name. And as far as we know, I did it right. Right, exactly, I'll hear if it's not. With that, we have the motion before us to make that appointment of Mr. Kanzemback to the Finance Commission. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? That passes unanimously. Do we want to delve into the Parks and Rec, perhaps with multiple motions, or do we want to pass that over for now and go to another commission?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Botzik, Donaldson, Harris, and Herr. I know that the final position was somewhat shared, but I believe that Mr. Herr brings a different perspective that could be appreciated on the, on that commission.
All right, and just before we get the second, maybe hold off on that for a moment, we do have three full-term vacancies here and one partial term. So the partial term is a one-year partial term, and that would then be the longest potential appointment. Is the maker of the motion suggesting that that would be?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Correct.
All right.
Harris would be partial term with the possibility of two additional terms. And then the full terms, yeah, the other three would be.
Would be full. Okay. Second? All right, thank you very much. That motion has been made by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Graff, to make those appointments as outlined. Once again, Ms. Harris being the one that would get the one-year partial term, the other three would be full terms.
Motion to amend.
State your motion.
I recommend for Parks, Harris, Donaldson, Botzik, and Cruna.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Got a motion to substitute Cruna for Herr on the Parks and Recreation Commission. To that, a motion to amend. Councilmember Bauer is the maker?
It'd be easy to assume that Cruna actually works for the city for as much as he has volunteered. I don't think I've been to a park event that I have not seen him at. He has a long history of serving and volunteering in the capacity, he's basically doing everything with the parks, except actually being on the commission. I think his years of experience volunteering and in the middle of it would be valuable to the Parks Commission.
All right, as the second, or Councilmember Schroder?
And that's what I thought, too. It was, it was incredible, the amount of hours and projects and his, his, what he has brought to our Parks and Recs Department, and the, and not just for a short time, for many, many years. It just seems like he has a really good pulse of what's going on, and really understanding the volunteer side as well as what's going on, and so that, that's, that's why I support it, too, because he seemed very, very qualified.
Right, other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
I very much
I very much appreciate what Mr. Kruna brought to the table and with his experience. However, I think that he does fill a niche that is already filled by some of the others in that length of service. He also was exceptionally excited about the programs that he's worked on, and I think that we have, we have worked a lot to have an advisory. Mr., this particular individual didn't provide an opportunity for a lot of questions of him and directed the conversation, and I just wasn't sure he'd be the best group mate. But not to undermine in any way the amazing contribution he brings to our city, and we would be at a big loss if he were to not be there. And it could have been nerves, but it was, it was, it was hard to get word in.
Right. Other discussion on the motion to amend. Councilmember Groff?
My concern is that we need to look at having many different voices on this commission. And Mr. Kruna is certainly an excellent volunteer, but it doesn't add some of the voices that are missing on this Parks, on this commission. So that's why I'm not supporting this.
I would say that, on the balance, I don't know that I would support this amendment either, for, especially the reason that Councilmember Groff mentioned. I look to, you know, make sure that our commissions do represent kind of across the board in the city. And 100% Mr. Kruna has a ton of experience and a ton of, you know, commitment to the Parks Recreation Program, and we're so grateful for that. And I, I hope that that continues as long as he is physically and mentally capable to do that, because I think it, it serves the city well, but also I think it serves, serves him well as an individual, and clearly he gets a lot out of it. But I do, I do concur that I would like to see a little broader representation of the community on, on this commission. So that's why I would not be supporting this motion to amend. Is there other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We've got the motion before us to amend to substitute appointing Mr. Kruna for Mr. Herr, which was the original motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion fails. Councilmembers Strawn, Groff, and Mero in opposition. We have then the original motion without amendment to make those appointments as outlined. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That motion passes unanimously. All right. Well, we got through the most difficult one, or maybe the most difficult one. Maybe I spoke too soon. You don't know what we have in store for you. I never know what you guys have in store for me, fellow councilmembers. This brings us to the Planning Commission. And I do want to note, and it is not on the screen, I checked the tallies, and actually the applicant Schmidt did appear in two tallies for myself and Councilmember Strawn. And so the applicant Schmidt should show up on the chart with two tallies as well. And apologies for that error in the, in the data here. Oh. I don't know that that affects the outcome, but I did want to make sure that that was, that was reflected in the discussion. Once again, we have four vacancies here. This time, we've got two full terms, and we've got a partial term of one year and a partial term of two years. So once again, the two-year partial term would be the longest potential appointment if one served their full partial and the full two terms. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Barsted, Syrah, Jensen, and Lynch to the Planning Commission with the partial term, the shortest partial term going to Syrah, followed by Barsted.
Just to correct, if, if you're following the trend, the longest partial term would go to the highest tally getter, Syrah?
Correct.
Okay.
And just confirm, that's E. Lynch, since we had multiple Lynch's.
Oh, right. Yes, Aaron Lynch. Right. I don't know that, that the other Lynch did apply for that commission, so, but that's good to note. Okay. So Syrah would be for the 2027 partial term. The next partial term would be, we have two people. Are you looking to go alphabetical on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
That would be Barsted. All right. And then the other two full terms then would be Jensen and Lynch, it looks like.
I'll second the motion.
All right. That was a motion by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Groff. And just once again, so applicants Jensen and Lynch would be appointed to full terms to the Planning Commission. Applicant Syrah would be appointed to a partial term ending in 2027, a two-year partial term. And applicant Barsted would be appointed to a one-year partial term ending in 2026. That tracked with everyone? All right. Discussion on the motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Bauer?
Again, a lot of fine applicants for this position, and this one was tough. We have four vacancies here, and it's a lot of turnover, just like there was in, in Parks. But I feel good that with this selection of applicants for the Planning Commission, that the work of the Planning Commission will be able to continue and serve the city very well.
Right. And as the seconder, Councilmember Groff?
Yes, I was impressed by the qualifications and the presentation of the applicants, and I'm looking forward to hearing their, their feedback from the Planning Commission as they do their work there.
Right. Other discussion on the motion? Right. With that, we've got the motion before us, once again, to make those appointments as outlined to the Planning Commission. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Those appointments are made. And then finally, the Police Civil Service Commission, once again, probably our second most difficult decision of the evening. Is there a motion from the council?
I'm going to make a motion to appoint Akamando to the police service.
Second.
All right. That's been moved by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder to make that appointment, and that is also for a full term. All right. Discussion on the motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Bauer?
Yes, while there wasn't many applicants to this, the quality that we did receive echoed, like we've said, for multiple of these commissions. But again, it's important to note here, some great candidates.
All right. And as the seconder, Councilmember Schroeder?
I would, I would echo the, the comments.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? I think the only thing I was going to say is, at least a couple of us had a little challenge narrowing it down to just one choice, and I think that once again echoes the, or reflects the quality of the applicants. In, in my conversation with Ms. Akamando, I was almost thinking that the commission might be a bit of a letdown from what she was looking forward to being able to do in relation to the police department. But my, my sense is, is that everybody that gets appointed to that commission really plugs into public safety and police work that the city does beyond just the, the rather statutorily limited function of supervising, you know, hiring lists and processes that is outlined. So with that, I'm supportive of the motion.
It's funny you should say that, because I felt the same thing, like, oh, she's way, like, she's a lot for this, but, you know, she'd be great, but gosh, she's just got so much to offer.
Yeah. I think the way, the way I ended it with this particular applicant was not just, if you don't get appointed, you know, seek other opportunities. I actually also said, even if you do get appointed, you may want to.
Find a few other things.
To be able to fulfill all the things you want to do for the city. But with that, digression, we have the motion before us to make that appointment to the Police Civil Service Commission. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously, and that appointment is made, completing our round of commission appointments for this springtime appointment cycle. And I believe, as is traditionally the case, and we talked a little bit about it at our, at the end of our last meeting, Mr. Trudgeon, I imagine, will set an agenda item in the coming weeks to do a sort of an after-event process analysis, and we can bring up any things that we observed that we'd like to either adjust or, or whatever. So that should cover, I think, the discussion we had at the end of our last meeting. Councilmember Groff?
And just, Mr. Trudgeon, would you remind us what the process is for onboarding new commissioners now?
So, there's a couple. There is certainly each staff representative does reach out and meet, meet with the individuals. We also do new commissioner orientation prior to our ethics training, which is the second week of April. So there'll be kind of official one broader, but also they'll meet with the appropriate staff liaison to go over whatever information they need to share, so.
Because when I called, they asked me that, actually, and I was trying to quickly remember what the process was.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Okay. Very sure. Well, I told them that for sure.
And have we formalized any kind of mentor approach with our new appointees, or is that more just kind of an ad hoc thing as it, as it goes?
Nothing formally at this point. That's a good suggestion.
Yeah. I think it's maybe something to, to circle back on, and especially thinking about our newest commission.
Exactly.
Who has new commissioners as well. We may want to seek to figure out a way to have them have mentors that may not even be on that commission yet, because everybody on that commission is relatively new, and maybe there needs to be somebody who's experienced in commissions more broadly that can serve that role for those folks.
Should we volunteer Councilmember Groff?
No. I'm not sure he was stepping forward in that way by raising this, but, but, you know, maybe we pick one of the fun commissions and have those folks be the mentors, and we'll let somebody else decide who, which ones are the fun commissions.
Is this something we should discuss when we do our review of this Planning Commission, the mentor piece, or just leave that to?
I'd like to.
Do we want to bring that more forward? Do we have a discussion?
At a future agenda item?
Well. Or just?
I think it's something the council has talked about before, and we maybe have not had a formal process, but I think my suggestion, unless there's any disagreement from the council, would be to see if staff can work to, to make that happen as part of this, especially once again with that particular commission, and so many new people new to being on commissions and stuff like that. There's just not, you can't just say, oh, you know, I'm the person that's in my second term, and I can be the mentor and things like that, so.
Just thinking, especially with some of these commissions that have had four, a turnover of four. I believe the mentorship would be quite important.
Oh, yeah.
Like the planning commission.
Yep.
The planning commission.
Parks and Rec. We may have to have some mentors pulling double duty. But anyway, that would, that would be the suggestion, and I don't know that we need to take a more formal action on that at this point. Unless there are objections, maybe that's the way. Is there any objection from the council on that?
I think it's a good plan.
No, seeking clarification. All right. Thank you. With that, then, I believe we've got a brief consent agenda this evening. I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon for that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $232,212.61. Item 10B approves massage therapy license for Yun Wellness LLC at 1736 Lexington Avenue. This business will be taking over the space currently occupied by T. Massage. As part of this action, you are revoking the massage therapy establishment license for T. Massage, besides granting the license for Yun Wellness. Item 10C is, approves the expenditure of funds for tree removal and site clearing for four city projects scheduled for construction in 2025. Work will be done by Husky Construction at a cost of $150,875. Agenda item 10D approves entering into an updated Ramsey Accounting GIS users agreement, joint powers agreement for a five-year term running from 2026 to 2030. We've been in this JPA since 1997. And then, agenda item 10E approves entering into an agreement with Language Line to provide language interpretation services to serve Roswell residents and customers when using our services or being involved in our activities. Cost will only be incurred when the city needs to use those interpretation services. And that is the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion on the consent agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. That brings us then to our future agenda review. Once again, Mr. Trudgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is slightly different than what's in your packet. We shifted some things around. So our next meeting, there's no meeting next Monday, but a meeting on March 17th. We'll start off with the EDA meeting, so we'll review and look to move forward with the housing market study, and just a reminder about the prioritization worksheets. Then we'll go into a regular council meeting. We would expect to have a recommendation to award a contract for our architectural services. I know the period closed this afternoon. I know we had several. I don't know if we got more at the end of the day. We also want to have a conversation about looking at replacing our water meter and radio replacements. We originally started radios in 2010, and there's some need to replace those and look at some potential options. That is something that has been programmed into our CIP, but we haven't really highlighted, so we need to bring that forward for conversation and some eventual decision. Additional hotel licenses may be in front of you. We also will adopt the, consider adoption of the ordinance to implement the sales tax based on the direction. And then, we would anticipate, at this point, it could change, approving the recycling agreement that we had agreed to go forward with waste management. So we'll continue to work on that. And then on the 24th, we have just a pretty minor public hearing for a liquor license at London Barley's that former restaurant space will be opened up for some type of food service. I'm not quite sure exactly what. Consider our last of our hotel licenses, and we also want to begin a discussion with the council about looking at a cap on massage therapy establishments. We currently have 31 massage therapy establishments. You know, a few years ago, we did put a cap on, and I mean, 24, took it off, and so we do want to have a conversation about just the amount of work it takes and obviously some of the negative impacts they could have. So, again, a discussion, not looking for a final decision, but just beginning that discussion. Then finally, I note the April meetings, and April 9th is the ethics training, and that's when we'd have the new commissioner training and the chair training. So that is a Wednesday, if I recall correctly. So that will be something that will get information out a little bit, and Ms. Tierney will be presenting again. And that is the future agenda.
All fresh and new.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Trudgeon on the future agenda, Councilmember Strawn?
I just wanted to check, so on the 17th, there had been an amendment to the TIF note for the harbor. What happened with that?
Yeah, I, I think we're still waiting for some information. That could pop back up, but last I heard, last week, it was, it was, they're still waiting for some information.
Okay.
But that could pop up. That should be, if we get all the information, a pretty routine thing, but we just don't have all the information needed to process that case.
All right. Other questions on the future agenda or future agenda items that are initiated by councilmembers or announcements or reports or communications? I think those are all the things on the list.
I don't think I have anything tonight.
All right. Well, with that, then, the only other item on our agenda this evening, which is on page two, is to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Bauer. No discussion, as we all know, on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:27 PM. Thank you, everyone.